Of the planning board, do we have to formally open a meeting here, Kevin?
Uh, the planning board does Mr. Chair, uh, we're all set, but I would turn it over to Chairman McKnight to see he can, uh, roll call his, uh, members and then we can jump right in.
And I'd ask for a motion to open our joint meeting of the Planning Board Subcommittee with the Board of Selectment Meeting tonight for the MBTA overlay district. And we have a motion, either Mr. Lawrence or Mr. Um.
So.
Thank you.
Woodhams.
Never motion. Yeah, no, I got it. I finally got it. Uh, we got a motion. We have a second discussion. A roll call vote, Mr. Woodhams.
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence.
Hi.
Mike McKnight, I, uh, three in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Gallo.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, uh, I know you and your committee and the whole planning board have been working tirelessly, uh, as has our board, uh, on this MBTA communities, uh, legislation. Uh, you and I have had plenty of conversations offline, uh, as you're very well aware, um, I've tried to, you know, uh, uh, communicate, uh, the concerns and the points of this board and our constituents in town. Um, in my conversations with you, I'm just, I'm just saying this so that my board can hear, uh, an update. Um, I've had plenty of conversations with Chairman McKnight. Um, he knows our concerns, he knows our constituents' concerns, um, and he knows that we've had a multi-pronged strategy of trying to work with the, the state on any kind of relief, which didn't get us anywhere. Um, you know, then we charged the planning board in this committee who's done a fantastic job of identifying parcels that are going to be presented tonight, uh, to us tonight. That'll have the least negative impact on our community. Um, and the third prong of our strategy is to obviously watch very closely the legal challenges on the enforceability and constitutionality of this law. Um, with that being said, I just want to again thank Chairman McKnight, who's worked tirelessly with this subcommittee and the full planning board, um, on this MBTA communities, uh, uh, legislation and what they're presenting to us tonight. And at that, at this time, Mr. Chair, I pass the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo. Um, Amanda, I don't know if you've got a couple of versions of this PowerPoint. I don't know which one would show better, but I think if, if we could bring that up, um, I think it'd be helpful to have people see the deck if that's possible. Fantastic. Great. Thank you very much. Well, uh, appreciate the, uh, the offer here and glad that we are here to, uh, to give you an update on where we are. As, as Vice Chair Gallo said, we've, we've had a lot of communication, a lot of back and forth. Um, have we gotten this perfect? Probably not. Have we come a long way since the last time we spoke? Absolutely. Um, it's, I think what we've learned, uh, going through this process is this is, there are multiple answers here potentially, but I think what we've done as a, as a subcommittee and then brought that back to the planning board has helped us define, uh, the guardrails in which we're trying to operate and get to a decision on where is, where are the best sites and/or where are the least impact, uh, for the town? So, um, I would ask Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence to step in if, uh, if there's a point they'd like to make anytime through this presentation, uh, but why don't we skip through to the next page? Um, site selection process, uh, proposed locations and next steps is what we're going to talk about tonight. On the next page, uh, is just a list of all the meetings that we've had, um, including, uh, the subcommittee meetings. And then, uh, I would call this a, uh, a pivotal moment, uh, when we had, uh, the meeting with EOHLC. And we were able to answer some questions or ask many questions and got some answers that helped guide us in terms of how we were going to present, uh, various sites. Uh, probably the biggest, uh, is that we're not, we are still in compliance. We are in compliance as long as we get to uh, a submission, uh, by the end of the year. And, uh, I think probably the biggest thing is we could carve out portions of parcels, uh, which really helped us to define in a, in a more refined manner, not just locations in town, but actual parcels where we could put this. Um, and so over, over many, many meetings and, and many conversations, um, you know, I think we've gotten to a point where we've, we've honed in on some things, uh, some particular sites and excluded others for various reasons. Um, one of the things on the next page is the start of, we stepped, took a step back and said, okay, what are our guiding principles? We understand what the intent law is. We understand what the guidelines are of MBTA communities. But what is it that we as a town, we as a planning board and we looking out for the town's best interest want to, should consider as we're looking at these sites? Um, and these are, these are the things that we came up with. So continued educating ourselves on the law, the guidelines, the risks of doing nothing pending lawsuits in other towns and having other towns. Uh, and what have other towns done to solve this? And we've got a lot of information on that in, in particular. Um, find a site that has the least impact on various things, whether it's town character, uh, the town center, congested roads and traffic, water, town services, police, fire, ambulance and school. So we took all of that into consideration as we were putting the filters on this to look at various sites. Work to find sites that generally comply with the law and guidelines to the extent possible. And we say that because I don't think it's possible actually to, to build a particular site unless you're an MBTA community with a downtown that you put the overlay on and it's within the designated distance from the MBTA to meet all of the guidelines that they put forward. So we said, how can we, how can we look at this and say, we're not, we probably aren't going to meet all of them? What are the most important ones to meet? The other is to include affordability of 10%, so we don't lose traction on our, on our 40B. Um, include, uh, things like the master plan and open space recreation documents that are in the town that the townspeople have looked at and voted on. So how do we incorporate to make sure we're not out of line with the things that we've already put into place? Um, and then strategy on, on, um, where we select sites and why we select sites so that they're not necessarily easy to develop all at one time. So how do, how do we place these sites where over a and I'd say a longer period of time, the town can absorb them. So how do you, how do you look at sites that, you know, some, maybe some, maybe a few of them can be done sooner, but others are much later in, in five, 10, 15, 20 years out potentially. Um, so those are the first set of guidelines. The second page is a continuation of that. Uh, look at sites that are hard to build out and would offer, um, benefit to the town. So thinking about sites that need to clean up, um, junkyards and other sites, underutilized sites, sites in town that how, if we did develop them as MBTA community sites, how then could we get a benefit and get, get projects put on sites where they get either cleaned up or they're, they're maximizing their utilization where today they're not. Consider implications on tax revenue. We had a lot of conversations about this and there are a number of sites on the, on the chart we're going to see next that are commercial zones. And as we looked at those and had multiple conversations about that, we tried to stay away from that because of the tax implications. If we put this residential development over a commercial zone, the tax implication could be dramatic. Um, we could be offsetting a residential tax for a commercial tax and not getting what's best for the town from that perspective. Um, locating in different parts of town. So a key strategy that we really started to develop on was, how do we spread this out? Let's not have 750 units sitting in one location in any part of the town. How do we break that apart and say, what is it that would make sense from a distrib- distribution perspective within the town? And a lot of that came down to the next one, which is access to public, uh, to, um, public transportation, um, access to the Ts. And one of the things in the MBTA communities is how close can you build these to existing T stations? Now, we don't have one, but other, other towns do. So Franklin, uh, Foxborough, um, all have, both have T stations. And so as does Norfolk. And so we considered it as a kind of a driver. How do we, how do we, if it fits correctly, how do we build these sites into areas where they're closest to T stations? That also actually puts them on roads that can handle traffic. Cause if you, if you look at this, 15 units per acre adds up pretty quick to put some pretty sizable developments on the minimum. A lot size of, uh, 15 units an acre on 25 acres, we have to have one parcel that's 25. That's 375 units. So where do we put these that the traffic can actually handle it? So we started to look at the road networks of 140 Route One, uh, North and 495. Um, we tried to stay away from West Rantham and the core town center uh, of Rantham. The town center already has a development that's underway or it's coming before the planning board at eight units per acre. Um, but we felt that putting any more than that in the center of town would be, uh, detrimental. Um, bring forward the best, least disruptive plan to the November town meeting so that we get in front of that. We put in front of the townspeople so they can vote on an option. Is it, is the one we're going to present tonight? The ultimate option? No, I'm sure we'll have a lot of opinions on it, uh, whether it's in this meeting or in, um, when we present to, um, folks at, at information meetings or even at the town. And then we learned, uh, through the process that using the town center as a mixed use development, although there's some benefits to that, it actually doesn't help us, uh, because when you say eight units per acre in the center of town, we have to make up an average out to 15 units somewhere else. And the acreage that we use doesn't actually count against the 50 acres. So we, we took town center completely out of play. Those are the guiding principles that we use to filter our discussions and our conversations. On the next page, um, it's just a clip from um, adjacent communities, which we are. And, um, and this is the point we said reasonable access to the transit station. Um, that was really, that's what drove me to say, okay, how could we locate these on the, you know, outskirts of town potentially, not in the town center, where there's traffic networks that can handle it and where they're close to T stations. Uh, they'd like to see it in the center of town and I don't think, uh, you know, at least, at least in our town, that wouldn't, I don't think that would be the best option. Maybe Norfolk, which I think their overlay is in the center of town because they have a T station, have to be within a certain distance. But, but not for Rantham where, where, where we are in adjacent community. Um, on the, uh, next page, this is, this is probably a lot. Uh, this one did not come up well, Amanda. Um, on this version of the deck, I apologize. There's, it's missing all of the X outs. Um, maybe I could ask you to switch over to the, oh, never mind. Here they come. All right. I guess we're on a, uh, on a deck time delay. Yep. Yeah. Go back please. Okay. So what you might've seen the first time was, uh, the analysis that was done, uh, by our town planner and some consultants that essentially, uh, did an analysis of various sites. It came up with a, a site in the town center because we didn't, I think probably because we didn't know enough about how um, the mixed use development would play with the credits we were going to get and the advantages we might get by using the town center. We've learned since that that's not the place, uh, to put this. And then one further down Route 1A, um, uh, that would pick up a fairly sizable overlay district. Uh, one of the concerns that we've talked a lot about and then I've been a proponent of this is to not put it on 1A. Um, to me, Route 1A, I mean, uh, Route 1A coming up into the center of town is, is part of our town character. To see it and, and it's eclectic, uh, but it's, it's part of, part of kind of what I enjoy when I ride up 1A to see all the different things that are happening on 1A, whether you have residential, you have some businesses and you have older homes and things. So, um, we took, we took that off, off the, the chart and for that reason, as well as traffic, um, we felt that putting more traffic on 1A uh, coming up into the center of town was not gonna, not gonna be viable. Um, you will see here, uh, some 14, I believe, different or 13 different parcels. We could walk through each one of these. Um, but what I can tell you is that if it didn't fit the criteria and many of these are commercials, commercial districts. Um, some of these, uh, are in West Rantham, some of these are on Route 1A and some of these are in areas, uh, you'll see number two, we crossed out because of, I believe, um, the green has an implication around, um, recreation and school and other things. So, um, I think I wouldn't say we exhausted every single parcel in town, but we started to look at this and hone in on areas. And the two areas that we really started to focus on are three areas. I'll, I'll start there because I think we, we narrowed it down. Uh, is 140 on the Franklin line. You'll see two circles there, number one and number 12. Number one being a commercial district. Um, part of that is built out, uh, part of that is not built out. And number 12 is essentially the land off of, um, Elysium Street that goes out to the sandpit. And then the other, uh, one of the other sites was up off of, um, route, kind of at the intersection of Route 1 East Street and 140. I think it's on East Street. And that has access to Route 1A, Route 140, and it's very close to the, uh, Gillette or the Foxborough T Station. The 140 on Franklin Street is very close to a lot of shopping as well as the T station in Franklin. The other site that was in contention until our last meeting was down on the south of Route 495 on 1A. There's a few parcels down there. Um, I believe they are called the Armitage Junkyard. Um, and at our last meeting, uh, I think that got taken out of play. Um, it, it may be still there if we can't find the acreage we need between the number 12 site and the number 13 site. Um, so still to be determined, but, um, the three areas of town, uh, that, uh, we've been focusing on are those 140 at Franklin, East Street up, uh, by between 140 and one and down south of 495. There was a lot of discussion initially, uh, that came up around the outlets and people, um, wanted us to take a look at that. The reason we discarded that was we felt that that would be a high risk, um, option for us. They, they have the infrastructure. If retail declines, it would be an easy transition from retail to housing and they've got the infrastructure with sort of treatment plants and, and things like that. To have something go up fairly quickly. And one of the things that we were trying to do is to to not have that happen as quickly as that. So that is, that is the, that was the reason why we took out the, the outlets. Um, I'll pause here for a second before we go into more depth on 12 and 13, uh, and see if Mr. Woodhams or Mr. Lawrence wants to add anything to that. That, that's a culmination of four months of multiple meetings. So if I miss something, I'd like them to make sure that we, we, uh, filter that in.
Mr. Chair, a couple of quick, just a couple of quick notes that I wrote down. Um, just as, as an addition, by eliminating the town center from consideration, that also maintains our, our special permit authority, which we would lose if, if, if we did the overlay. So that was another reason for not wanting to, to include that. Um, and the other thing with discounting the outlets is because the way that this is worded, um, that the overlay requirements or, or guidelines is the underlying zoning would dictate the size of the buildings that they'd be able to put in. And because of the zoning of where the outlets are, it would allow for uh, structures that are much taller than anywhere else in town because of the particular zoning at the outlets. I'd be, be able to put in, I believe what, four stories? Um, or more if, if, if it were to be done at the outlet. So that was another reason for, for not wanting to put it there because of the intensity that it, it could bring.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Woodhams. Um, one of the interesting parcels that we looked at was number nine, which is out at the, uh, I believe that's, uh, the abbey. There's a lot of land out there and one of the, one of our thoughts was how could we benefit the town if we put something out in West Rantham? Could we get that, the development to put up a new water tank and then, you know, help the town from a water perspective. But I think at the end, we felt that the two acres owning in West Rantham, uh, was so unique that to put, you know, 350 units on 25 acres wouldn't, wouldn't fit with the character, uh, in West Rantham. So we, we took that one off the table as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think also the, the reason that we kind of stopped looking at West Rantham more so was, you know, any traffic added to 121 coming into town, uh, that's already a very difficult situation. Um, and, and so that was, that was also in our things. And I do remember that number two, if I believe, if I, uh, know correctly is the state school, then it was ineligible for certain reasons.
Yeah, we, we pushed and I know, uh, Mr. Sweet, you can, you can talk to this. We pushed on whether that was an option. And I know we've tried that a few times in town, but it was not, uh, we clarified that with the state as well. It's not, it's not something that we can go and, and overlay for this.
The other, the other benefit of the parcels that we've chosen is none of them intersect with our, uh, water protection overlay district. And when you, when you add that into the calculation, it makes a difference because if you have very much of that at all in the parcel that you choose, the state is going to make you rewrite all those regulations so that, or add some kind of something in there so that these people are immune from those conditions. And it can't trigger your special permit for them to build it. So there's just, there's just a, a layer of complication that comes on if you, if you, uh, include those districts in what you're doing, unless it's just a small sliver of what you've got. And so there were, there were concerns in around that, that I don't think we need to get, go into chapter and verse of in a busy, uh, you know, BOS meeting, but, um, you know, that also, that also led us to where we ended up.
Good point. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lawrence.
I'm complete.
Okay. Um, why don't we dig a little deeper on, on sites 12 and, uh, 13? We, we spent some time on those as we narrowed the, the pool and the list of sites. I think the next page has. Uh, this is, uh, this is Elysium Street off of 140 near the Franklin Town Line. Um, there is a, a very large parcel, which is outlined in blue. We're not recommending all of that. We've bisected it with this yellow line that you see. And we're looking at that's, that as a site. Um, one of the things that we're in the process of doing is now, uh, having MHPC help us to calculate the usable areas because these, this one in particular has some wetlands up in the, I guess we'd be in the northwest corner. Um, there's a net acreage here that, that we can use. We're looking at this as a larger parcel. So 25 acres as a minimum, maybe up into, uh, 30, uh, depending on how much yield we can get out of the other site. Um, and I'll explain that when we get to the other site. Um, but we feel that number one, this is much of the traffic from this, uh, and if we're, we're talking, um, 25 units, we're talking 375, we're talking, um, 450 units here. But we felt that much of the traffic, uh, from the folks that would reside here would end up coming down to 140 and moving more towards the Franklin side. Uh, there's a couple of supermarkets over there. We've got the T station. And to kind of take some pressure off of the town, uh, town center, although if they did turn on 140 and come to the center of town, 140 is a road that we felt, uh, of all the roads in town that could handle, handle the traffic. Um, the other thing is we think that this one would be a longer run in terms of development. Uh, you've got the sand, you got the, the pit that's still active. Um, I think this one, uh, at least from my perspective, and I think I'll, I'll generally speak for the plan, we're felt that this one isn't one that would be developed in the near future potentially. Um, so that is, that's kind of how we're carving this out. We think we're going to get, uh, we could get up to 50 acres, but it, we don't necessarily think that this is the right place to put all of them. 500 units, 750 units is a lot. Uh, so the number of units here will be determined by the yield of acreage we can get out of the East Street parcel. And again, I'll, uh, open it up to Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence for any other particulars on this site that we talked about that I haven't mentioned.
No, I, I have nothing else to add. I think that was pretty, pretty much exactly how we were all thinking.
Okay. The second, uh, site, which is on the next page is the East Street. So what you see at the top of your page is 140. East Street is the one that comes down across, across the page from the top, from the left to the right. Um, we've carved out in blue this whole parcel, but we're not anticipating, uh, the use of all this. As a matter of fact, much of this site is, um, will be excluded based on wetlands, uh, issues. The area is 68, when you take almost half of that off of, off of it. Um, and then contemplate the work around buffer zones and, um, the other areas in the different colors you see here. It's possible this site, and we don't know it yet, but it will determine how many, how many acres we actually put down at the, or recommend to put down at the Elysium Street site. Um, you know, if this turns out to be 15 acres usable, you know, then we put 35 acres over at the other site. Um, the, the nice parts about this is its transportation. Um, it's got 140, it's got East Street that runs up to 1A. Um, the T station in Foxborough is relatively close. Um, access to 495 without, you know, necessarily coming through the center of town. So we felt that from a traffic network, uh, which was a, as we said, was a key filter. This site, uh, at 15, if, if it's 15 acres, um, you know, 10 acres to 15 acres, 10 acres would be 150 units. Um, you know, wouldn't be too bad up in this area. Um, I believe this is one acre zoning where this, the properties down by the sand pit are two acre zoning. So, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about the next steps on these, cause we have to draft actually bylaws for these, for the overlay districts. Um, and for right now, we're starting with the underlying zoning, uh, as, as for, for the setbacks and all of the criteria around metrics. So from that perspective, we think we'll net out of this somewhere in that 10 to 15, uh, acres. If for some reason it's on the lower side and we don't want to put more than 30 acres, uh, we could always open the discussion up again around 1A south of 495, although we've, we've tabled that for now. Uh, we haven't picked a third site. Um, doesn't quite, the, the third site down south of, uh, on 1A, south of 495, people have to get on the highway and then drive to T stations. Um, but, uh, at the, at the last meeting of the board concluded that we should kind of stick with these two based on they've, they fit the filters that we've put on the guiding principles. I'll pause there. We've got more to go through, um, but not on sites. And so I'll, I'll pause there and just see if, uh, if, uh, Vice Chair Gallo, any of the, uh, board members have any questions or discussions, uh, before we move on.
All right. I'll open it up to the board. Uh, I'm going to reverse this time. I'm going to start with Selectwoman Rouse.
Chairman Knight, thank you to you and your committee for putting the due diligence into this task. I know it is not easy to try to comply with all the restrictions and, and mandates and keeping the character of our town and the infrastructure. Um, and how we can support this growth. So I appreciate all the work that you and your team did. So thank you for that. Um, regarding the two sites, I'm just kind of curious, when you say, um, like defying near future, do, when you're looking at these sites, are you thinking like three years, five years, 10 years? Or is it hard to say at this point when you say that?
I think it's pretty hard to say, but I, I think anybody coming in to develop a parcel, having to go through the permitting process, um, it's going to be a two or three year process, I think usually, um, big sites, traffic mitigation issues. Um, the warehouses on Route One, which, um, needed a signal has, has been now at least two years in the, in the permitting process. And I don't know, some of these may require some state permits, which, which will, which make it longer. I think in general, any site is going to take some time. What we were trying to do though was say, how could we push or how could we put a site together that would allow something, you know, this site is probably a bit easier based on the timeline than, than the other one because of the, the, uh, the gravel pit. So could we have, as a town, absorb 150 units at a site like this in the next two or three years, um, as it gets permitted? And then sometime in the future, could we absorb um, more, more on a larger site, uh, which would be the other parcel? That was, that was at least my thinking on. more more on a larger site, which would be the other parcel? That was that was at least my thinking on this is how do you how do you space it out?
Because we're also have the center of town that's coming into play as well, so we're essentially absorbing three large potential growth for the town, so pretty significant. Just clarify for me, so I understand, when you mention like the developers potentially helping with another water tank, it was my understanding that we kind of give up all that and we don't get to ask the developers to help with infrastructure and other things that would be associated with these units. Am I incorrect on that?
I guess we'd have to probably seek some legal advice on that. I think linkage is not a thing we can do, but if the development requires water that we don't have, if I believe as part of their development, you know, whether they go out and find grants or or other infrastructure mechanisms, they wouldn't be able to build it, build their development unless they had capacity for water. So I think those things do get linked in the development process and the permitting that they physically can't get an approval if they don't have have water. So whether or not, and maybe Mr. Sweet knows more, whether or not we as a town have to put up that water at some point and pay for it so that they can then develop their property, or whether as part of their development they have to to do that. I know on offsite improvements, many times we require developers to mitigate their their impacts. And so they would be the ones that would have to go seek either state approval and funding or their own funding to put a signal in, so.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Sweet, how that how that, whether you have any more input on that, but.
Yeah, no, if I could, just Mr. Jim, I think, yeah, that's that's accurate. The town is not obligated to provide those utility services that do not exist. Any developer that looks to develop a site would have to bear the cost of whatever that is, whether that's pockets or some other funding source. But we're not, we would not be obligated to get those services to there to meet their project. Absolutely. Like you said, all of them require technical reviews and like that to enhance the systems, but it would be on, it would be on any developer.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, that was what I thought too, but I'm glad to clarify that, Kevin. We'll go to Selectman Harrington at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, to the planning board, you know, greatly appreciate all that work that you've put into this. I mean, I, you know, just a quick quick note, Aliseum Street. It's very, very narrow, very, very windy. I'm curious to see how you would do a traffic study on that narrow, windy little road with a four, potentially four hundred and fifty units. That'd be one concern. I do see sites four and nine that are locked off. Chestnut and Mount Street, and then the Sister and Abbey. Wouldn't they make good sense because they're so close to the Franklin line where Forge Park? And if you came down through Bellingham, they take the Forge Park and then grocery store access, train access. And it would limit a lot of traffic to the center of town through one forty. You'd be bringing the traffic right down into Franklin and towards the Bellingham area, which would eliminate, you know, congestion that we already have. And then again, that site across from the outlets, the armitage and whatnot, that's one exit up from the Franklin exits where you have all your grocery stores. You've got Forge Park on the left, Franklin Center, or you get down to the right, you've got Foxborough. That to me would make, you know, good sense, especially for traffic mitigate, you know, moving traffic away from our already clogged streets. But just just the just a couple of thoughts from what I see from you, from, you know, this initial study.
May Vice Chair? So the West Rantham sites, and I spent, I think I spent two hours one Sunday driving the streets that border the Abbey, all different directions. And I thought there was a T station at the end of one of those. It's not. It's actually, I think it's up at the next exit. But I think the the concern there was that it's not as as easy, Aliseum to one forty to Franklin as it is from the Abbey roads. And the the one that we would come off of is actually the I apologize, I don't know the name. I forget the name of it, but it's on the backside of the Abbey. It would not be on the front side of the Abbey. And so I think what we were concerned with was A being in West Rantham and then B, the traffic isn't as easy to go through the roads and the backroads to Franklin as it might be to get on to West Street and come into town. And West Street is already a very busy road. And I'll I'll open it up to to Mr. Woodhams and Mr. Lawrence for more comments on that. But the other, the other one you mentioned was ten. The probably the driver of why we eliminated that, and we weren't talking about the the retail across from the outlets. We were talking about the sites down further.
The one further down.
Yeah. Was because those are commercial sites. And again, it comes down to a tax question. Can we, is the developer going to build? And can we get more taxes out of commercial than putting residential down there? But Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Woodhams, maybe you have any other thoughts on those?
Jim, you want to go?
No, go ahead, Chuck.
Just just in respect to the the conversation about around the Abbey, yeah, we we we, when we had that discussion, my my thought was, well, people couldn't go the other way and come out. They basically come out on King Street, right, four ninety five eventually. But it's not a real direct route, and the I think the reason that we really kind of stepped away from it was because of our fear that if that becomes a difficult way for people to get through, they're going to go down Arnold Street, they're going to go to West Street, and they're going to bottleneck Wampum Corner even even more so. Wampum Corner is the pinch point for everything coming out of West Rantham, and it's one of the reasons that we decided against the whole one A corridor in the first place is because of the potential impact on that. And I think I think the possibility that people will head towards Franklin is less of a carrot than the stick of having them come into Rantham and 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 further worsening the traffic on West Street. That was my recollection of the conversation we had that night.
So Lawrence?
No, I don't have anything to add to that. I think, you know, what I said earlier and and what y'all have said pretty well covers it.
All right, moving on, I'll ask Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So Chairman McKnight, first of all, I I too want to commend you and your committee for doing doing all the hard work and the due diligence on this. I I do have just a quick question, though. Any consideration at all for maybe potential development on Route One? Or is that all commercial zoned?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We we talked about Route One an awful lot. We talked about it in the commercial zones down by four ninety five. We talked about it further up, so that was number eight on our chart. Further up on fourteen, there's a couple of small parcels that we might be able to get seven acres out of. But Route One was rezoned not too long ago, you may recall, for I think it's three different zones. There's a north, there's a south, and then there's the the crisp. So much of it falls into the crisp. And one of the one of the despite those conversations, what we said was part of the living communities of MBTA is that we were concerned that school buses for kids on Route One, you know, it's it's it's, we thought it would be difficult to with a straight face say to the, you know, and get approved through MBTA that Route One is the right place for livable communities. You know, with kids and trying to make it feel like it's a it's a development of two hundred units that that is situated correctly. So that was the other conversation we had about Route One. So we we took the three parcels off. There's a lot of commercial there we could develop, but again, it comes back to the highest and best use of of those properties for tax revenue for the town.
Understood. Thank you.
Just while while we're talking about that, Mr. Chair, I think Chairman McKnight, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I will just, the one caveat to that, if I could play you know, devil's advocate is you're not going to have a a bus stop at the end of Route One. You would have a development with a street that the bus would go down. And I'm assuming that the 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 apartment complex would be in that down street, and that's where you would stop and you'll let the kids on and off the bus. So although I agree you know, just in the back of your mind, I would say just keep that in the back of your mind because I agree with you, getting the state to you know, I mean, listen, and that's a whole other conversation for another day. Our job is to bring something to town meeting and give it the the townspeople the opportunity to vote it in or not vote it in, right? I'm not trying to appease the state here. I'm trying to do my, do the job that we have to do so that, you know, we're quote unquote in compliance. If the townspeople vote that they want to vote this in, the townspeople are going to have an opportunity to say, hey, Chairman McKnight and Subcommittee, you guys in the planning board, that's amazing, but we're going to say, we're going to take the other route. We're going to go the Milton route and say we're going to legal challenge this thing. I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying that is an option, and the townspeople are going to need to know about that. So you and I have talked about this in the past. I'm not trying to make this easy for anybody. Develop seven hundred and fifty units in our town, and I know that, you know, you're not either. But I just, yeah, the the Route One thing, just because Selectman Anderson mentioned it, it was on my mind as well. Not a huge deal. I just figured I'd throw that two cents out there. Any other discussion before we let the chairman move forward with his, the presentation? Being none, floor is yours, Mr. McKnight.
I think some of these other ones, I'm going to bypass some of these because I think they just get into, and if you want to flip to slide ten, Amanda, if you could. It just talks a bit about.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, before you go, I I just to to record things after hearing the the select board's input. Sorry, I don't want to take up any more time. We have to, but regarding the school buses, yeah, the the bus, the bus stops would not be on Route One, but the buses would still have to be able to turn in and out of Route One. And I know from having a close personal connection to the people who run the school buses, they do not want buses on Route One for any purpose, even if even if that's not where the stops would be, just just to pull in and out of a street on Route One in a school bus is is difficult, so I not thinking that the the stops would be on Route One, but even just getting the buses in and out of a side street is 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 a problem. And as far as the traffic on Aliseum Street, Mr. Chair or select board member Harrington made the point that Aliseum Street is is narrow winding. And that's all true. It's possible that if they do a full traffic study, that maybe the requirement, you know, they might find that they in order to be able to build units there, they would have to do some improvements to their road, so it may end up working in the town's favor that we could get some improvements on Aliseum Street so that it would be able to handle that traffic, and that it would be something that you know, a developer might have to foot the bill for in order to be able to build their project.
Yeah, two, two, two good points, Mr. Woodhams.
Great, thank you. Slides, I'm going to bypass slide ten. You can look at it, but I think it's just context. It's really not something that the board is focused on right now as we talk about, you know, honing in on a few sites that we're that we're working on to bring to town meeting. The the next site has some information, our next page has some information, and also more contextual. This one is, so we've gone through a schedule of looking at what we have to do next, and so what the planning board's charter is next is to create the bylaws around these. As I said, we're going to start with the underlying zoning and see if the setbacks and buffer zones and criteria work. I think when we get to the larger site, we're going to put more in. I I would guess I make it akin to what we did in the senior living community where there's going to be a center where we're going to require meeting, you know, open recreation or clubhouse or something in a larger development that might have four hundred units. The developer in the town center is doing that as part of their development, so we can put and craft into our bylaw, you know, many things that would make this a development that we'd be proud of if it had to go in. And by the way, it probably costs the developers money to do those things as well as the offsite improvements and so, you know, maybe cost is one of those things that would drive the project to be further out than than in the near term. And so I believe this is just saying that we've got some public comment period. We still have an open planning board meeting. We're going through those draft bylaws. We're going to meet on those and come up with and socialize what we put in, I think. Making sure we have proper buffer zones to residential developments is going to be a key, making sure that we have the right amenities defined for a large residential development. If it's over by Aliseum Street, will be part of those bylaws. So certainly, any any input that we can have help on those would be would be welcome. On the next page is just the calendar in terms of what we have to accomplish and the warrants and the timing. And so I think we've were in queue to meet the timelines that we need to do so that we can have this on the warrant before it closes and have it on the town meeting agenda for the December ninth meeting. We can certainly take comments and and information and and adjust if we need to. And then this was just a further schedule. There is some conversation about, and I've heard it from a number of different ways, should we be going out and putting this in more of a public forum for comment and or understanding, so I think in here comment period closes, but also should we be before engagement opportunities, Rantham Community, Rantham Votes, F B, Cable Eight, anything like that. So we're open to ideas and suggestions. We, there's nothing on the books for us right now, but open to ideas and thoughts of whether this should be socialized before we get to town meeting. And so that's out there for discussion. We can certainly certainly take whatever input you guys might have on that.
Yeah, I would say, I, Chairman, if I may, I mean, I would say of course, we want to get as much information out to the public as as possible. I think the vast majority of people, I hate to say this because I think both the planning board meetings and the select board meetings are riveting, and everyone in town should tune into them, every single one of them. The vast majority of people, however, probably haven't tuned into a planning board meeting or a select board meeting unless they have a matter on the agenda. So I would say, you know, Kevin, with Kevin Sweet's, you know, guidance, you know, any information we can put on the town website, I think it would be good to get, you know, the dialogue going so that when we do have this special town meeting, we're trying not to start from square one as much as possible. Because there might be something out there that a resident has an incredible idea that no one on either of these two boards or subcommittees has thought of, and it could be, you know, a great, you know, you know, something to help mitigate. You know, one thing I do want to say too, Chairman McKnight, when I was reading through the presentation that was sent over, you touched on it a minute ago, but those improvements that you said that you can write into the bylaw about, you know, a common space, about charging stations, about, you know, energy efficient, you know, anything that we can do to add to to your point to get a development that we'll all be proud of, that might increase the cost of the development to the developer, you know, all those things I think should be very closely looked at. As as you've indicated, you will do, and I think this would, and the townspeople would greatly appreciate that.
I just asked Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Woodhams if we have anything else to add that we haven't covered that would be pertinent.
I have nothing else, Chairman. I I think we've covered it pretty, pretty completely as far as where we are.
I I guess in summary, this is a hard thing to swallow no matter what you do. Seven hundred and fifty units of an overlay district, no matter where it is for our town is difficult, which is why we put the guiding principles together, which is why we had the filters, which which was why we're trying to put this in areas where it has least impact and where it might take longer to develop and 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 take some time so we can absorb it as a town as as things start to work their way through. If if developers come forward, you know, where would they come first and how long would it take them? I think Chairman Rouse, I mean, Selectman Roush had a, you know, that's a very interesting question about the timelines and we don't know, but I think the, the sandpit, at least my feeling is the sandpit would take a long time to get developed. And maybe that has to wait until that sandpit shuts down. So, or the gravel pit. So from that perspective, um, as the largest parcel that we've identified, you know, maybe we've, maybe we've helped the town from that perspective to, to push this down the road a bit.
All right. Do we have any, uh, any, any other discussion from our board for the, what's up committee? Town manager, Kevin Sweet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, um, expand on the discussion around the community engagement. Obviously we can work, um, internally to work with, Amanda does a great job with infographics and really, uh, has really done a great job with getting as much information either through the Rantham News Portal and or directly on the website. For those that are listening and, um, potentially watching at a later time, it's a very easy link to go to Rantham.gov under the community tab at the top of the website. There's a dedicated MBTA communities page. That page actually has a significant amount of information. I don't know that we could actually provide any more information than what's on there. Once you're on that page is another link that says planning process and prior meetings. Every single one of these meetings, um, including the discussion tonight and the discussion tomorrow night at the planning board meeting, we'll have presentation slides. We'll have the insert from, uh, meeting minutes, the recording. Um, and you, that goes all the way back, um, you know, as far back as, uh, a number of months ago. Uh, and there's a significant amount of related documents and public hearing exhibits and you name it. I don't think, um, if you go to that website, there's probably no shortage of information and, and certainly no information that has been discussed, uh, that you cannot find on that. So, um, again, that, the, the Rantham.gov town website is the best source, anything and everything, uh, including direct meeting minutes from the planning board, the subcommittee, this, uh, our select board meetings. Uh, there's a, a significant amount of information on there. But in addition to that, um, through proactive outreach, through social media as, as this develops, um, you know, we can work with, uh, Amanda and, and the, uh, planning director and, and get the right information out and direct folks accordingly. So I just wanted to share that because obviously, um, we all know that community engagement is going to be a, a huge component. Um, our residents need to be educated on this. Everything we can do to get that information out, we'll do. So I just wanted to share that.
Did, um, Mr. Lawrence have his hand up? Was that directed towards us? Mr. Lawrence, I thought, did you want to say something?
No, I'm sorry. I was asking my wife to wait a moment before she talked to me on your commute.
I thought you were flagging me down. I apologize. Said, do we have any, uh, any more discussion? I'd like to get the planning board off as soon as possible because I know they have a meeting tomorrow night.
Just a point of order, Vice, Vice Chair, do we need to open up public comment as it's an open meeting or are we, uh?
I don't think we do. It's a joint meeting. There's no public comment. Uh, Kevin, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. Committee. So you are in a public hearing. Um, obviously as the planning board, so you're meeting, you'll have to continue that public hearing process, but this is just a joint meeting.
And I would, I would ask the public to reach out to us, um, you know, any questions or concerns or feedback. What's the Kevin? What's the select board, uh, S, what's the select board email address?
As in Select Board Office, sboffice@rantham.gov. Please, then any comments you have, anything to that? We'll make sure, uh, everybody receives that and, and take, uh, take your comments and input seriously. So thank you.
Thank you. At this time, should we let Chairman McKnight close his meeting? Mr. Chair?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate, uh, the time tonight. Do we have a motion to close our joint, uh, meeting of the Subcommittee of the Planning Board with the Board of Selectmen for the MBTA overlay district, uh, zoning?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Lawrence?
Better be Jim than somebody else.
Yeah, I know. You're on, uh, I second it, but.
That's why he beat me out. I second.
Second discussion. Vote, vote, Mr. Woodhams.
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
Hi.
Mike McKnight, aye. Three in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.